Meeting will come to order with the clerk read the roll call.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protemhaney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Join me on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. If there's no objection, so ordered. We now go to a very pleasant presentation. As every hour, I see Wendy, I see Tony. We have a presentation.
Mark.
What?
Did I drop liver? The President's here.
No. And Mark Lewis. I didn't see you over there, Mark. How could I have missed you? Okay, we do have a presentation because we have a very distinguished delegation that's going to go back to Toledo to pay their respects to the Libby family at the museum. So if you'd like to come forward, I'll make a few remarks, but I think we did celebrate the 50th anniversary not too long ago with Mark Lewis as the impresario, I think, on that affair. Our benefactor for the town was, for those in the audience maybe who don't know, Mr. Libby of the Libby Owens. When I was growing up, it was the Libby Owens Ford, only because that was on the glass on the little wind wings in the car, which I don't think they make anymore, but they still provide the glass. But the Libby family, Mr. Libby was a true benefactor of this town, but not only here, but back in Toledo, Ohio. And they are recognizing the 200th anniversary of the founding of the, what was it, the New England Glass Company in Massachusetts originally? And then he moved the company, when he took it over, he moved it to Toledo. And he not only was a benefactor here, but he, what, did he found the museum back there?
Yeah.
And set it up? And they have the collections of all of the 200 years of glass manufacturing. They, the Libby Company, I think they're the largest, at least in this hemisphere, of glass manufacturing. And they also were one of the original pioneers. Owens, I think it was Owens was the inventor of a machine that automated, you know, blown glass, which really revolutionized the industry and the early maker of light bulbs. Wish I'd thought of that idea. That was a heck of a product. So anyway, we have, is everybody here that's going back? Oh, no? Okay. I don't want to overlook anybody else besides Mark. But we've got Gail Childress is going to go, Helen Friddell, Richard Ghul, Toby Petty, Judy Pugh, all my old neighbors here, Rob Randall, Don and Ann Scanlon.
Rob Randall.
Paul Spellman, Tony and Ann Thatcher.
Paula Spellman.
Paula, pardon me, Paula Spellman. And Wendy Barker. So if you guys would like to come up, we have a couple of proclamations here to give to you to present back east of the Midwest. Are we going to take a picture?
Yeah, we, Toledo wants a picture.
Oh, I should have guessed. That's fine. He's taking the.
Johnny, come up, Johnny, come back, come over here and we'll just all stand behind you. We'll all stand up. No, no, we're good. Like I said, we'll all stand, we'll stand here. We're good.
Well, I want to come up.
Well.
Tony?
Hi.
Are they just?
We're good.
We're background.
We're good. Can you see Mark? Can you see the photographer?
Yeah, I can see the photographer.
Okay. Here, you're coming. Johnny's squeezing ranks. We're good.
One more.
I do want better shoes.
No, can you move? Or, no, Mark. There you go.
We're triangulating back here.
We're gapping.
There you go.
We're gapping.
Good luck, be safe.
Be safe.
As you should.
That's exciting.
What an entourage to go back there.
Huh?
What an entourage to send back.
Yeah. How are they getting there?
I think they're in the van. Van. Oh, well, I did it for you, so don't worry about it. You did that to Bill?
We were gapping, we were gapping.
Do you know how they're getting there?
Okay, guys, we are now at the.
Are they flying or driving together?
They're flying.
I assume they'll be flying. Yeah, right, yeah, right.
It'll be a long drive.
Okay. Next up is our public comment period, and I have, I have three public comment cards. Michelle Thomas, come on down.
Hello, everyone. Michelle Thomas, and I live on Del Prado Court. And I get to be brief. I'm going to request that you move item five to the beginning because I've asked the council this a year ago. I think water should be on every agenda. It should be the first thing on the agenda. We aren't going to be able to hook up tiny houses if we don't have water. Everything is affected by water. It's our quality of life. So I think it's important enough to give a status of, maybe brief, but in the beginning before everyone's left, so they remember that water. We don't have Nina Shelley here anymore, so we have to take care of ourselves. And it worries me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Andrew Stasi wanted to make a comment.
Actually regarding cultural resources.
Right, that's on our consent agenda, so now would be a good time for you to address it. I don't think it's a separate.
Item, ma'am. Anyway, council staff and Andrew Stasi, East Grand Avenue. First, I wanted to thank you for all your hard work in developing a very thoughtful, user-friendly, hopefully compliant-friendly ordinance, cultural resource ordinance, and probably one of the most protective ordinances in the state. So this is a good thing. Obviously, there's other things that can be improved upon as you move forward in the ordinance, and fortunately, it's in a format that you can do that. I just wanted to address particularly the importance of preconstruction meetings and the importance for preconstruction meetings for public works. Primarily, the city of Ojai is a maintenance-oriented city. There's very little new construction actually going on. So perhaps the tribal community can get together with the public works department in the future and give them guidance. But as well, perhaps programs can be developed to create awareness, because that's going to be the key in moving forward. Many, many years ago, there was very little awareness as far as pollution and regarding throwing things down, storm drains, lead paint, et cetera, et cetera. So now we're on the threshold of developing awareness for cultural resources. It's going to take a lot of communication and a lot of work and a lot of education building. That's basically it.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, can I make one comment, Mayor?
Sure.
Andrew, just thank you. You went here for the resource meeting. We did read your statement into the record, and all of us would like to just say thank you for your time and your involvement in helping us craft that.
And thank you. We're all spokes in the wheel. Appreciate it.
Okay, and Sarah, would you like to come forward?
Greetings. Greetings, Mayor, Council. I appreciate your long suffering with me earlier. As I commented, I appreciate the hospitality and the warm welcome, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Two things I would like to be considered as public health issues in the city of Ojai, and this is summer cooling shelter for those who are currently living in RVs, currently living in vehicles, or currently living without shelter in the city. We have seniors. One 80-year-old senior, she sleeps outside of the Saint Thomas Aquintus Church under an awning, and she's 80. And so I would like you to consider her because she is one of Ojai's own. And there is another senior that sleeps in her van. She's in her upper 70s, and she has an oxygen tank and a medical bed, actually, in the back of her van. And I believe that a summer cooling shelter would help those vulnerable people to be able to consistently have a place every day to be cool, to maybe shower, you know, wash their clothes because it's hot and sticky. So that's the two things that I would like you guys to consider as you think about the seniors that are living without shelter right now because their rent has gone up, they can't find anywhere else, and they feel really attached to Ojai because they've been here 20, 30, 40. One senior has been here 45 years, and she's sleeping in her truck right now. So just summer cooling shelters and showers, maybe for these individuals that need help right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly give a little more information to the council in terms of some cooling programs that I know are in the community.
Okay.
I know that Help of Ojai has provided in the past a summer cooling shelter. I know Help primarily serves the senior residents in town. I could check with the director and see if they're planning to do that again this summer and report that back to council. Also, wanted to let council know, and we would continue to do this unless there are any objections, we've also made the council chambers available when there's been peak summer heat for individuals to come in and if they just want a place where they can get out of the heat. We don't have much in terms of showers or facilities, but we do have bathrooms in a cool place and a kitchen and a water dispenser. So we can continue to make City Hall available on those peak hot days. I know that doesn't completely address all the concerns of the Speaker, but just wanted to get that information out there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Could you include in your report what Help of Ojai does in terms of showers and washing machines, things like that, maybe at their county facility?
Sure, and I'll find it if there's other programs in the valley as well. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Move approval?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any objection? If not, so ordered. That brings us to discussion items. There are only four or five on the agenda, and the agenda's been approved, so Michelle will probably be getting to the water issue fairly quickly, I would assume. Okay, city crime statistics. Chief?
All right. Mayor, council, boss, public, I'm happy to hear, to give you some stats on what it looked like in 2017. I know I'm going to forget which button it is to move it forward. There we go. Okay, so for those that got to see the article that was in the Ventura Star, talked about the anemic crime numbers that we have here in the valley, which is good for all of us, right? Our crime rates really went down, and there was a quote in there that said, "I had nothing to do with it," right? So what went along with that quote was, "We have really dedicated professionals here to help control the quality of life and provide a good service to our community, and we also have a very robust community involvement who are not afraid to call and let us know that something doesn't look right." One thing that we rely on for our public is, if they see something out of the ordinary, to call us immediately so we can investigate it. Oftentimes, we can't on our own go investigate something because there's rules on our ability to approach people, but if you see something that's suspicious and call us, then we have more of a handle on being able to actually respond and talk to the person to find out what they're doing and render aid if necessary, or give them the direction they need, et cetera. So you can see this has got the last three years of our crime stats. Part one crimes are the big crimes that we look for, which are homicides, rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, burglaries, both residential and commercial, grand theft, petty theft, stealing vehicles, which is called motor vehicle theft, but it's stealing a car, and arson. So in both 2015 and 16, we had 73 total part one crimes, and then last year, we had 49. So 49 is about as close to shangri-la as we can get as far as part one crime goes. I mean, that's a pretty remarkable number when you think about, we have 7,500 residents, we have, you know, thousands of people that come yearly as tourists, and to have those little numbers is pretty staggering.
I also noticed about half of that's petty theft.
Correct.
It's not the worst of the worst.
Correct. And to your point, exactly. The majority of those crimes are really the minor ones. So you go back and look at, how do I go back? That one? Okay. So we had 11, they were all commercial burglaries. So last year, we had no residential burglaries, which is unheard of. We had 11 commercial burglaries, 11 grand thefts, and so 22, so almost half of all of our part one crimes were thefts. One of the challenges that we face, and we're very fortunate because we are a small community and very actively involved, is when people commit those offenses, we're citing them out, they're getting a ticket for their offense, most oftentimes, they're not being booked. But there are a lot of repeat offenders. So of those 22, there's several times that that's the same person on multiple times committing those thefts. The jails are not trying to keep people in for minor offenses. We're trying to rehabilitate, give them opportunities to be successful, so there's not a lot of people for lower-level offenses spending time in jail. Unfortunately, those who are inclined continue to offend, and as a result, we have more crime attributed to individuals, to certain individuals. So that's just a different way of breaking it down. I'm not going to bore you with the details. So here's an interesting slide, right? So if you watch TV, you think that we're in way worse shape now than we were ever, right, as far as how dangerous it is and the trouble that we have. On the far left of that graph shows how many crimes that were occurring in 1991. On the far right of the graph is how many crimes we have in 2017. The difference is, we're way more aware of the crimes that are being, that are occurring now than we were 26 years ago. So in 1991, our population was 7,575, and we had a crime index of 344, the modified crime index of 350. So 350 crimes that occurred in, part one crimes in Ojai in 1991. And in 2017, we had 49.
Wow.
That's unbelievable. But you can see that there's been a steady trend downward, which is fantastic, and we want to continue to see that go downward. So I encourage people, if you see something, say something. Don't worry that you're bothering us. We will always put it in the proper priority. If there's an emergency, we're going to handle that first. But if you see something that just doesn't look right, call us. So these are the part two offenses, so this is everything else that gets lumped into the crime category. So our simple assaults, both felony and misdemeanor, sex offenses that are not rape, could be child crimes, other such sex offenses, and then the vandalisms. And we did tick up a little bit, 8%, so it went from 103 to 113. Almost exclusively, that increase was from domestic violence, misdemeanor domestic violence assaults that triggered that to go up. So on our arrest stats, so in 2016, we made 426 arrests, and last year, we made 422, so pretty consistent numbers. The number of felony arrests went down. That's also attributed to some crime categories that are now misdemeanor, possession of methamphetamine, possession of heroin is now a misdemeanor, is no longer a felony. So those are some changes that occurred with the Safe Schools and Neighborhoods Act that was passed a few years back. And then for our city ordinances, we do write them, not very often, but the ones that we do write tend to have to do with open containers for people that are causing disturbances, usually in the parks, that happen to be drinking, which you're not allowed to do unless you have a permit at Sarzody. I know issues permits where alcohol can be permitted.
Could I ask one question on that?
Absolutely.
One of the issues we've seen a lot of publicity about has been the decline in patronage for public transit because of what the behavior that's going on in public transit in parts of LA County especially. Have we seen, have we, you know, seen any inkling that that kind of contagion might spread to our trolley system?
Once again, we're a pretty remote area, and I think that people are.
So we haven't seen any of that?
We haven't seen, we had an issue that occurred on the trolley that you probably read about in the paper, but I believe it was an isolated incident. We're not seeing the large collection of problems on our systems. We do have good camera systems on the trolley, so we do have the ability to go and root out offenders after they've committed a violation.
So far, so good.
So, so far, so good. And like for most of our crime here is, you've got to be pretty brazen to come here because there's only three ways out. So if you're going to commit a crime, you better hope you drive really fast, because we're going to get you. We shut off the exits pretty quick, and if you've ever tried to drive in Ojai at night, you get stopped like four times on your way here.
They have cameras on SCAT also?
I don't know if SCAT has cameras offhand. I know our trolley does because I know we reviewed them for our most recent incident.
Yes.
So somebody says yes.
Public Works Director is back there shaking his head to the affirmative.
Thank you, Greg. Always handy, Greg Grant. Thank you very much, people. Good job, Greg.
Cool, Greg.
So the call types, we responded to a few more calls for service, and once again, this is in the city area, not the unincorporated area. This is just in the city proper. We had 296 calls for service. There's the, of alarms, rather. So the total calls down at the bottom there was, we had 2,850 calls for service in the city last year compared to 2,200 the previous year. So about 557 more calls for service, which is good. I like the dialogue. I want people to not be afraid to call us. We're here to help, not to harm you in any way. So here's a breakdown of our response time. So I know I had a meeting and I was talking specifically about response times for the city versus the unincorporated area and where that comes in. And one of the measures that I use to measure us is the dispatch to on-scene one and for priority one calls. So priority one calls are the ones that are the most emergent, where somebody's being currently assaulted, that we need to get there as quickly as possible, oftentimes when we're driving with our lights and sirens on. And so from the time that dispatch tells us till we get there in the city is four minutes and 44, 4.44, or four minutes point 44, it's not 44 seconds, it's almost four and a half minutes of a response time. From the time that you call dispatch where they receive the call and we get there is almost seven minutes. So by the time they get the basic details of what's occurring, they type it in and send it to the dispatcher that's telling us there's a couple-minute delay there, but from the time that we get notified, our average is about a little bit under four and a half minutes. Compared to our unincorporated area where we have less presence, there's only three cars for the whole unincorporated valley, a valley from Stanley and 33 up to Rose Valley and including up to the summit, where it's over seven minutes from the time the deputy receives the call to going on scene. So almost double the response time.
Still pretty fast.
Still pretty good.
Still pretty good.
Still pretty good, but not as good, number one, as we want. And there's some outliers that do cause some of those differences, but from a response time standpoint, the city is small, we do have two officers that are assigned to the city, and if any of those officers are out of the area, the county area does respond in. It works the other way as well, but we have a great, a great plan in place.
And I thank you for that, because that was a specific request of mine, was to demonstrate the value we're getting for what we're paying.
Right. Yeah, the, let's see here, I got the exact. It's 7.80 is the response from the time it's received on scene, and from the time the dispatch is called to on scene is 10.37. So these are just some of the traffic violations that we write. Almost always the traffic citations, the majority of them are for not having insurance or not having registration are the two top getters. The distracted driving is right up there as well, so. Hands-free, people, hands-free. Okay. So, but accidents, we did pretty good last year. So I don't, once again, I'm not going to take credit for that. This is one of those things that we're out there, we're visible, we do our best to control behavior, but in 2016, we had 88 total collisions. Last year, we only had 58, seven of which were DUI-related in both times. But as a side note, in the city, we made 22 DUI arrests. So there's still some learning to be had for drinking and driving. Please don't drink and drive. Find another ride, have a plan ahead of time so that you don't run into somebody, ruin their life or your own. And so probation searches, I know that this is, these numbers are going to change in the years coming forward. Historically, we reported on the number of searches we did where whether we stopped a person that we knew was on probation, or we made a car stop and they were on probation, we searched, and we counted that as a probation search. We're going to start counting them as only if the deputies at briefing decide, "We're going to go hit Johnny's house today." That's going to, we're going to count that as a probation search. If you, during your travels, you see a probationer, I don't want to count that. I want to count the ones that we're doing with intent, where they had planned, pre-planned. So you'll see some numbers in parentheses on the side there, so hopefully that'll be what it looks like moving forward. But last year, we had 540 probation searches with 292 arrests of those probationers. This, well, that's actually, this year, 2015 total, should say 2017 total at the bottom, we had 718 searches with 351 arrests. But with the new counting methodology, it was 178 searches with 59 arrests. Part of that's also going to change. The arrests should go up because the previous mechanism to counting that was, when the deputies would enter that they did a probation search, they would put the address, and then it said, "Arrest, yes or no," but didn't say how many. So oftentimes, we'll go to a probationer's house, and there's more than one person that gets arrested out of there. So now we can enter anywhere from 0 to 99. Hopefully, there's never 99 that get arrested, but we can enter that number so we can get a more accurate count of how many arrests we do make.
James, what's the main reason that you do the probationary search?
Why we do probation searches?
Yeah.
The main reason for probation searches is to ensure compliance, right? Part of the benefit of not going to jail or serving your entire time in custody is that we're going to let you out on probation saying, "Hey, we know you did wrong, you've admitted to doing wrong. Now we're going to give you some parameters that we want you to abide by, and we're going to compromise some of your securities or your rights," right? So we're going to say, "You no longer can refuse to be searched. We now can search your homes, we can search your vehicles to ensure that you're being compliant." And so our probation searches are just that. We're trying to ensure compliance from those who are on probation so they don't reoffend. So we're kind of, they know we're out there, so we're hoping to gain compliance. Occasionally, that doesn't happen, as you can see that we do arrest people for a variety of offenses, sometimes new offenses, sometimes for violating what was on their probation terms as well.
And that's just random selection?
Correct, random selection. And we do track the ones that we're doing so that the same person's not getting hit 15 times in a row, you know?
Okay. I just wondered.
Yeah, no, good, great question. And that is crime stats 2017.
Another quick question.
Yes, sir.
Just, just by word of warning, I guess, to everybody, that had a real bad incident in Oakview, the overturned vehicle out in the county, okay? Was that a running red light?
You know, I did not get briefed on what that was. The Highway Patrol handles all the car accidents in the unincorporated area, but.
SV upside down and everything else, right?
Yeah, and, you know, because we have two-lane highways, and there's some hazards on either side of those, either a mountain or a cliff, I just urge everybody to please drive reasonably when you're driving, drive the speed limit. People that drive too slow create a hazard because then people get irritated and try and pass.
Right.
Which is as hazardous as somebody driving fast to begin with, and then stopping at red lights, stopping at stop signs are a must. And if you think, you know, and texting and driving, you think, you look down for one second, you've traveled 50, 70 feet in that amount of time, you don't realize how far you've gone when you're not paying attention to the roadway in front of you. So I really urge people to not be distracted while they're driving.
I just brought it up as a warning. It's a, just be patient at that intersection because.
Great warning.
Someone didn't get patient, and it was a bad one.
No, absolutely. Great warning. I totally agree with you. Thank you.
You're looking for people who text and talk on the phone. I think that Creek Road's the place to.
Yeah, Creek Road, which I drive every day, I take Creek every day, and I see the variety, right? I see people that are driving way too slow, I see people driving too fast, I see distracted driving, and I know that there's an effort to try and get people to slow down, but by driving 10 miles an hour below the speed limit, it is not an effective way of getting people to gain compliance. Alls it does is get them angry, and then we have to deal with that. And then they make even worse decisions like passing over the WL lines and potentially into oncoming cars, which really sets up a problem. So if you see something, call us hands-free, and we will address it.
Yeah.
Chief, just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Now, how does the crime statistics, where we have them going down, just in general in the unincorporated area, how were they last year?
So unfortunately, the unincorporated area doesn't break it down by Ojai Valley, it's just the overall area, and I don't have that number offhand, just anecdotally speaking for the area, because I am in charge of that, so I know how many crimes are coming in. We're doing pretty good all the way around. Once again, I think it has to do with, we have a really good crew of officers, we have a great community that sometimes don't, like, we've, you know, we've talked before about, they don't understand the boundaries where the city and the county is here. They recognize and associate themselves with the Ojai Valley, and I think that that character that we talk about is true everywhere in this Ojai Valley, where they don't hesitate to call us, they let us know. And once again, once anybody comes up here to do anything illegal, they know they can't get out of here without us stopping them. Thank you.
Does the Sheriff's Office still compare stats west of Lancaster, Pennsylvania? Are you familiar with that term?
The, so the FBI stats as far as the safest cities, I think Thousand Oaks still looks at it, because I know they look at cities that have a population over 100,000, and the years I was out there, they would look at it. Unfortunately, it's hard, it's really hard to look at, right? And I try to always steer them away from doing that because there's some agencies that.
People always ask me, "Why do they do that?" I say, "That's with the Amish loo."
So, and that's the dividing line where we really start having community.
Now, how does the crime statistics, where we have them going down, just in general in the unincorporated area, how were they last year?
So unfortunately, the unincorporated area doesn't break it down by Ojai Valley, it's just the overall area. And I don't have that number offhand, just anecdotally speaking for the area, because I am in charge of that, so I know how many crimes are coming in. We're doing pretty good all the way around. Once again, I think it has to do with, we have a really good crew of officers, we have a great community that sometimes don't, like, we've, you know, we talked before about, they don't understand the boundaries where the city and the county is here. They recognize and associate themselves with the Ojai Valley. And I think that that, that character that we talk about is true everywhere in this Ojai Valley, where they don't hesitate to call us, they let us know. And once again, once anybody comes up here to do anything illegal, they know they can't get out of here without us stopping them. Thank you.
Does the Sheriff's Office still compare stats west of Lancaster, Pennsylvania? Are you familiar with that term?
The, so the FBI stats, as far as the safest cities, I think Thousand Oaks still looks at it, because I know they look at cities that have a population over 100,000, and the years I was out there, they would look at it. Unfortunately, it's hard, it's really hard to look at, right? And I try to always steer them away from doing that, because there's some agencies that...
People always ask me, why do they do that? I say, that's with the Amish Lou.
So, and that's the dividing line, where we really start having communities that are of the size between 100 and 500,000, where they can compare to. And traditionally, Eastern Ventura County has seen low crime numbers for the populations that they have. And certainly, I think that most places would be jealous to have the numbers that we have.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your service.
James, one more quick thought. Obviously, you and your staff do an incredible job. There's a volunteer staff, I know, that commits a tremendous amount of time to you and the community. And I'd just like to take a moment to say thank you to them also.
Oh, absolutely. What a shout-out for our volunteers in policing. They are tremendous support. As you know, we don't have a lot of staff. And so, the volunteers that we do have can really help with getting cars back and forth to service, getting our breathalyzers calibrated, you know, on a weekly basis. They have to take them down and get them calibrated. And if I didn't have the volunteers doing that, then officers would be having to take those down, taking them off the street. And so our response times would tick up. So certainly, our volunteer corps is a great asset to us. And if you go through the Citizens Academy, that's the first step towards being a volunteer. So if there's anybody interested, you know, hopefully at the end of the Citizens Academy, which graduates next week, we can get some volunteers. And then also, for those that didn't know, during the Thomas Fire, the first group of people that were called to help with the evacuations that started in up Ojai was our volunteers, specifically our search and rescue team. And they were up there driving through the fiery roads, knocking on doors and hitting sirens to get, to get people out. So we rely very heavily on our volunteers, and we're very thankful for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next item is the term sheet for the proposed noise ordinance. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just briefly introduce the item, and then turn it over to the City Attorney. And I believe your Police Chief may have some comments as well. But staff has been researching and is bringing forward to you a proposed term sheet for a way to address some changes in the code that will make it easier for us to enforce the city's noise ordinance. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and Council, what's before you is a term sheet for direction to prepare a draft ordinance that would come back for consideration and adoption. The goal is to take the existing noise ordinance and make it more enforceable, more easily enforceable. The current noise ordinance relies on a complex matrix of decibel-based standards, and the proposal is not to delete those. Those remain in place as the city's adopted sequel thresholds. For example, when you have a new building, there are new equipment for a building, that equipment is tested against those decibel-based standards. But in the field, when the sheriff's deputies get a call about a loud party, that isn't the most useful standard. Instead, the proposal is to take the existing language, which, paraphrasing, makes it unlawful to disturb the peace and quiet of a neighborhood, and to revise that slightly to make it unlawful to make any noise, which unreasonably disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood, and then add a new factor, as the existing nine factors, just taking that standard and making it applicable. The new factor would be whether noise is plainly audible by an enforcement officer at a distance of 50 feet from the source of the noise. This would allow a deputy to come to, receive a call about a loud party or other disturbance, go to the site, listen and consider, is this unreasonable disturbing or not? If so, pace off the distance, and then the deputy himself or herself can issue a citation and go from there. At present, the deputy can still doing, using the existing ordinance language, issue a citation, but they require a written formal complaint from a member of the public, often a neighbor. Many times, the deputies on the ground have found that neighbors are unwilling to sign such a complaint, in order to avoid getting into that kind of neighbor-on-neighbor fight. This would allow the deputy to receive the call, but then issue the citation if he or she concludes that that standard is met. The phrase "unreasonably disturbs" and the deletion of the existing physical discomfort language, and the also, the deletion of the existing annoying language, is based on recent case law that has looked at some other cities' noise ordinances, specifically Santa Cruz has had a couple of cases go up. And those cases have held that it is lawful to have a standard that bans unreasonably disturbing noise, but not a standard that bans physically annoying or physically discomforting noise, because what's physically discomforting to one person may not be physically discomforting to another, but unreasonably disturbing is a relatively generic standard. I realize there's a bit of a, the difference there is more semantic than anything else, but the language we're relying, or we're proposing here, has been approved by a couple of courts. And I think the captain has some additional comments.
And so, once again, our primary goal, when we go to any disturbance, is to gain compliance. So even though we get there, and it's based on a call, and we can hear the noise from 50 feet away, it does not mean that the person's gonna be issued a citation. It just means that we have enough now to take action on. We can go make contact with the neighbor and ask him to please comply, to get the noise down, so it's not audible beyond 50 feet, to have harmony within the neighborhood. And to the City Attorney's point is exactly that. Neighbors are unwilling to sign against other neighbors in certain circumstances, specifically if they've had negative interactions with a neighbor before, that they're, they don't wanna continue to exacerbate this problem, or have threats as a result of it. The 415 penal code requires us to have somebody sign a complaint, whereas a city ordinance, once again, it'd be call-driven, not driven by us. We're not gonna be driving around, listening for parties to have, it's gonna be call-based, but it'll give us the tool to necessarily take the effect, if we need to issue a citation, to go down that path, without having the neighbors, pit the neighbors against one another. So that's the intent of it.
Susan? Would you clarify for the public, and for me as well, because I'm often asked about this, where do bark incessantly barking dogs that are left outside alone, sometimes for days at a time, where does that fall under?
Unfortunately, that does not fall under my control at all. I can't stand barking dogs either. That's, that would be a, it goes through the Humane Society that handles that as well. And it requires sometimes multiple neighbors calling to complain, for them to take action against the owner for the dog that is incessantly barking. Because once again, the dog doesn't have the specific intent to formulate a crime. The dog is barking because it wants in, or it wants to be petted, or it wants something, you know? And it may be annoying, and trust me, it's annoying.
Yes, I know, I know. I've lived...
You know that, I...
I agree with you so much.
But it's not...
How you say it, the dog's not committing a crime.
So, look.
I've seen some suspicious dogs in my neighborhood, though.
Is it forming an attack?
I'm not sure.
So you're, if we, as a council, can waive, or whoever, however this is gonna work, we can waive the need for a written formal complaint, I'm wondering if that can also, even though it's not probably gonna be our job, because when I lived next to a barking dog, I was told by the officer that I had to have three neighbors sign a complaint.
And that's an animal control regulation, not a law enforcement regulation.
Yeah. But people do call you about that.
Oh, all the time.
Yeah. And then you...
And they can call us, because, once again, sometimes people do not wanna confront their neighbor about something that we used to feel comfortable talking to our neighbors about. And that's not always the case now. Neighbors aren't always receptive to our critique of something that they think you have a property right to have, without the consideration of others. So they call us and let us get in the middle. And then we go and ask them to kindly, either bring the dog inside, or do something to get the dog to be quiet.
Oh, you do still...
Oh, yeah, we'll still go and talk to the neighbor. We'll try and still gain compliance. But oftentimes, if the neighbor's not home, it doesn't do us any good. But we will seek to gain compliance, to have harmony in the neighborhood for sure. But once again, when it comes to enforcement, it falls to the animal control, and they do need three neighbors that are willing to sign a complaint to make that, for them to take action.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
You're very welcome.
Can I have a question?
Can I ask a question?
I would suggest finishing council questions, then public comment.
It's gonna be public comment.
We'll keep you in mind, Michelle. Hang on. Okay. Bill?
Quick question for the City Attorney.
Sure.
In turn, I understand the direction you're trying to go.
Yes.
I understand, and in the interest of being internally consistent, I have an issue with the proposed revised text on Attachment A, page 1 of 16, where it reads, "The purpose of this chapter is to maintain a quiet and comfortable living environment and to protect residents from unhealthful levels of noise through the control of unreasonably disturbing sound." I'm worried about the limitation to the definition of it "healthful," and wondering if it would be more consistent with the intent here, to add language along the lines, perhaps, of saying, "From unhealthful or unnecessarily intrusive levels of noise through the control of unreasonably disturbing sound." So, people aren't arguing about whether it's unhealthful or not.
I think that's a good edit, and I'll look at what wordsmithed, but yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Matt, I don't even know why you need that in there.
It's not necessary. It's, we're working with what was already adopted, but it's not necessary.
All right.
It could be dropped to just, "The purpose of this chapter is to maintain a quiet and comfortable living environment, and to protect residents from unreasonably disturbing sound."
Right.
I'd be agreement with that. Yeah, okay.
And I just have one other question. Most of the complaints I get are from the noise that motorcycles make in downtown Ojai on weekends particularly. Is that a DMV regulation or is that something that would be enforceable through a municipal code?
Unfortunately, presuming the motorcycles are licensed, registered, and are operating in compliance with the Vehicle Code and DMV regulations, the city can't enforce it. But I'll refer to you on that.
So, there are, if it's modified exhaust, then we can take action on it. So, if we've stopped them from other reasons, and we've determined that the exhaust has been modified, then we can issue a citation for having the modified exhaust. In California, you're not allowed to modify, because we have strict standards for smog control, et cetera, for air quality, which, obviously, in the valley, we're very concerned about. So, those type of concerns, we can actually take enforcement on for sure, and so can the Highway Patrol. I'll share with the Highway Patrol partners that I have up in the valley, that that's been a concern that's been noted, and see if they can help take enforcement action specifically related to that.
Okay.
But the point is, if it's factory-installed and licensed...
If it's factory-installed and still loud, then there's nothing that we can do, because it's compliant. But if it's been modified in any way, then we can, we can take enforcement action.
Okay. Michelle?
Well, I don't like that.
Welcome to governing.
Which part?
That was my subject.
Yeah.
It seems to me that loud motorcycles, I don't even walk downtown anymore on Sunday because of the groups. If our ordinance is, it has to be 50 feet away, the noxious noises, do I understand it correctly?
No, it's more difficult than that.
I'm happy to respond.
Yes, please.
Explain it to me, please.
The trouble with motorcycles is that the state vehicle code has preempted the city's ability to regulate noise generated by motorcycles. So, and I'm not happy with that as the result, but that is the result. The solution is for the legislature of Sacramento to give the cities the power to regulate motorcycle noise, which is perhaps unlikely. But that's, that's why the captain noted the issue, that if a motorcycle has factory-installed, lawful, existent exhaust...
Right. Understand.
Then it's, by state law, it's legal, and we can't do anything about it, unfortunately.
But if it's, I don't remember what the terminology about the unreasonable, or what did you say, the standard?
Unreasonably disturbing.
Okay, if it's unreasonably disturbing to an officer, is that probable cause to at least check and see whether or not these things have been altered?
The, that's a good question. I'd have to look into see...
We'll look at that. The question will be how that interacts with the vehicle code. We'll evaluate that.
Yeah.
As opposed to stationary noise sources.
Correct.
No, but can a, can a...
But can an officer hear the loud noise of a motorcycle and make a stop on it?
And pull them over.
I believe that we have the probable cause to make a stop, to determine whether or not it's got loud, because we have the experience to know, you know, motorcycles that come off the factory floor do not make the noise that you're hearing. Those ones that you're hearing have been modified.
Really?
Yeah.
So, a citizen can call in and say, "The motorcycles are disturbing me," and you would go check and see if they're modified or not?
Right. Usually what happens, of course, is a motorcycle makes the noise when it's moving at a high rate of speed.
Oh, no. I mean, honestly, I had to leave Bacolins one time. They were revving for 15 minutes and chatting. So I, so I could do that.
You could do that. If you're at Bacolins, the Highway Patrol will respond.
Yes, thank you.
Just so you know. I mean, it's a traffic complaint in an unincorporated area.
You're at Sea Fresh, call them.
If you're at Sea Fresh, one of us will respond.
Okay. Anything else on that?
No, I'll move approval as amended.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, approved as amended. Mr. City Manager?
I was just gonna make a comment after the vote. I apologize.
Yeah, okay. Do we need a roll call on that?
Not at this time.
Okay. If there's no objection, so ordered. Okay, that takes us...
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment on that. I just wanted to make sure for the council and the community to be aware that, so our code enforcement officers also have the ability to enforce the noise ordinance, and they also have a decibel meter. So, that is another way for, if people have complaints, that we can have code enforcement try to address some of those as well.
Can you indulge me with a quick question?
Of course, Bill.
In the Arbola, Chief Frye, if there is a party going on across the street in the unincorporated area in a vacation rental, and that noise is disturbing across the street inside the city limits, do you have jurisdiction for if those people inside the city limits file a complaint for the noise that's coming across the street to them?
That's a great question. Matt, you wanna help me with that? I don't think so. I think that where the noise is coming from is where the fence is occurring.
It's not the source, it's not the destination, but the source.
Exactly. I think it's tied to, are they present within the city at the source? That's one I'm gonna wanna sit with my law books and confirm, but I think that's the rule.
Oh, good. Okay.
But we'll confirm that.
Just curious.
Well, we can check with the county and find out what their noise ordinance is, because it's the Sheriff's Office both spots, right?
Right, exactly. And I'll check to see what their current noise ordinance is as well. But I know that a lot of the cities have, there's, have now distance-based, which is way more enforceable.
Okay. Then, did I get, we approved that, right? I said, without objection, okay. We are on number four, and it is the rubbish rates, or the trash hauling from recycle, from the waste haulers.
Mr. Grant will be giving a brief presentation. Here he is. And also to note that we do have some representatives this evening from Harrison Industries in the audience as well. Thank you.
Oh, good.
Mr. Grant?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to provide a presentation for the staff recommendation for the SolidWays franchise agreement with E.J. Harrison. This is a, again, a staff recommendation for a rate increase related to tighter recyclable materials acceptance requirements in China. And the staff report is extensive, but I'll give a quick recap for your, as well as the public's perspective, to understand this. Eight slides of quickie. The Ojai's recycling effort was all started primarily with the state AB 939 regulation came in place in the 90s. And you might recall, and they required 25% recycling mandate in '95, and then the year 2000, there was a 50% step up in the recycling mandate. E.J. Harrison meets this requirement by processing all residential and commercial recyclables. So everything goes to the Gold Coast MRF, which is down in Ventura. If you might be familiar with the facility, it's down by the Aspere Drive, near the Ivy Lawn Cemetery. And it's all cycled through there. Some people call it a MRF, Materials Recycling Facility. And it separates and bundles the recyclables for resale, which are shipped primarily to China. If you've ever been there, it's a pretty amazing operation. It all hits the floor. They've got a, you know, an odor control system. It's enclosed for dust or anything else. It all gets pushed by loaders over to these conveyor belts that push it up. And it's on an elevated scaffolding system, where they've got people that pick out, you know, they might be colored glass, clear glass, different types of papers that all get pulled over and dropped into their bins to the side. So they process a whole lot of material down there. I would estimate, in the, I better careful my estimate, 500 tons a day I'll throw out is roughly in that kind of category. The China Sword Policy has started over the recent years, but the biggest factor was January of 2018, they tightened up the restriction on contaminants in the recyclables. So they used to allow 10% contaminants, and now they've kicked that up to 1%, or kicked it down to 1%. So they, it used to be, you could get away with these giant bales of recycled plastic bottles and paper and everything else could have some trash in them. And you can imagine how hard it is to separate this out. And now they've dropped it to less than 1%. They were kicking around at .1, .3, but it's all below 1%. It's extremely difficult to make it. Most MRFs have not been able to make it. And Harrison really stepped up and took on this effort at the Gold Coast MRF. Additionally, they banned 24 types of materials, including, if you look at most of your bottles and all that, you'll see a number in the little triangular code. That's a code for the type of plastic resin. And the types 3 through 7 are now banned, and they don't allow unsorted mixed paper. So this has been a big impact on the Gold Coast MRF. The Gold Coast MRF, to meet this requirement, had to slow their sorting line in half, the speed of it in half, so the output in half. They had to add a second shift for the sorting line. They added weekend shifts. They added 38 people for the extra sorting. The total cost of this was about $2.4 million per year. There's a similar trend happening at MRFs all across the country, as well as throughout the state.
Greg, before you go further, you say that anything above a 2 is no longer, it's a contaminant?
That's right.
Okay, so, everybody should be educated to not just be looking for the triangle, but what number's inside the triangle, right?
That's right.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, type, yeah, one and two are still acceptable, three plus are not. It, this is part of the China Sword Policy, so the best thing to refer to is E.J. Harrison has the flyer they put out with, uh, their information. They can find other markets. I know they're looking, they've found some success in Vietnam and other places where they can maybe still recycle materials. So, the best guidance-
Shows the recycling triangle, we should still put that in our-
And Harrison is here right now. Can you guys give me the quickie on that? Are you accepting any three through seven recyclable plastics now?
Yeah.
There's some right now. So, it's just that majority of things go to China, so they need to find special bail, uh, through their, uh, their, their person that handles this and, uh, find markets for it. So, uh, so, at Gold Coast at the MRF, they've had to increase the residential recycling tipping fee. It's often called a tipping fee, 'cause the trucks come up and tip their refuse and recyclables on the floor. So, the tipping fee has gone up 176% for residential, from $27 a ton to $75 per ton. It's a huge increase. It's really first time we've ever seen an increase like this since they've opened the facility back in 1995 or so. And, uh, the commercial recycling has gone up 50% for the cost, from a tip fee of 50 to $75 per ton. So, that's not, that's indirectly impacts the total cost of picking up all this material and moving it. But, uh, that facility is, uh, under the purview of the city of Ventura, so they review and approve those rate increases and have direct oversight. Uh, they've put them through special circumstances 'cause of the extraordinary level of this rate increase, and they are requiring that they have, uh, uh, let's see, what was the thing? They're, they're actually requiring reevaluation on a quarterly basis. So, if any of these fees are, if they're able to reduce them, they'll bring down the tipping fee, and that'll be reflected back through these rates that we see that we're proposing to be accepted. Uh, the Harrison rate increase, which is what our Solid Waste Franchise Agreement has for the residential and commercial businesses in town, provides for a pass-through. So, when the tipping fee increases, the contract passes it through. It's really not something, uh, that can be controlled directly through the efficiency of the curbside pickup. So, uh, they are, they started this process back in October. I think they'd like to mention something quickly about that, but they had to see if they could even reach this goal of 1% contamination. So, they started in October, and they requested that they be reimbursed as of January 1st, after it was fully established they can meet these new requirements. So, staff is recommending that we do a, uh, a retroactive, uh, payment for past cost incurments they've had. So, that would be, uh, we can spread that cost over 18 months, is what we're proposing to minimize the, uh, jumpiness of the rate. So, from July 1st, 2018, which staff is recommending to implement the rate increase for 18 months, that'd be through December 31st, 2019, there'd be a 7.2% increase for residential rates, 4% for commercial. After that, January 1st, 2020, after the 18 months, it would drop down after that past six months was paid off to 5.4% and 3% increase for residential and commercial. This table, it's probably hard to see here, at least with my failing eyesight, but I think I can make it out, is, uh, you can compare rates across the county. This table shows what other cities and the county of Ventura, how they have reflected this change at the Gold Coast MRF through their rates. So, you can see the city's residential rate has gone up 7.2, as I just mentioned, for 18, and then it drops to 5.4%. Commercial ups 4% and drops to, uh, 3%. And then, uh, uh, and then the county of Ventura, they have variable rates depending on where in the unincorporated area they are. The highest, uh, rates, of course, are in hills. You can imagine, like, above Malibu, that's very difficult to access and get to the Gold Coast MRF. But their, uh, their rates varied from 4.8 to 6.3% increase. Camarillo was very similar to ours. City of Ventura, uh, in a similar range, except they started the rate immediately on January 1st, so they don't have any retroactive fee to pay. And the city of Karp is similar, although they're, have a unique situation that they subsidize residential rates with the commercial fees. So, they have a, an unusually low residential rate related to that. So, uh, I think that, uh, gives you a feel for the impact of this China Sword Policy. There's a lot, huge concern in the, in the administrative report. I've attached, uh, some senators have written letters overseas to their ambassadors to try to reduce the impact of this. It's trying to be, they, they try to address this, the World Trade Organization, uh, is an unfair, uh, treatment for markets that were fully established, but have not had any success with that as well. So, is there alternatives, uh, in order to meet the mandate? There really isn't at this time. Uh, Harrison is looking at alternative technologies, alter- other markets and so on, to try to sell this material, but nothing so far, except this, uh, meeting the standards they've set. Uh, meanwhile, we are working with Harrison to communicate to the residents and businesses on this issue. Uh, it's in the flyer going out on this month's, uh, in the trash flash that goes out with the bills this month. Uh, and we're educating residents about the importance of trying to keep their recyclables clean and following the new rules. And, uh, they're also renewing efforts to find alternative markets for, for this material. Uh, so I think that, uh, is pretty much the recap. Is there any questions?
Yeah, um, I like the way the proposal, you know, in terms of, of, of way you've scheduled it. I don't have any quibble with that at all. A quick question then, a comment. Is there any way of characterizing, is this even possible, the general level of contamination in the commercial waste stream compared to the residential waste stream? Is there any difference there?
I'd probably defer, defer to Harrison, if you don't mind. They're here. They know that waste stream way better.
I was just curious.
But I, I think in general that commercial tends to be a very focused type of waste stream. If you've got businesses, they don't have the variation of the waste stream that-
It might well be less contaminated.
I think it's less contaminated, and that was reflected as part of, uh, the rates are not going up quite as high. They, they weigh that more in residential-
No, I understand, that's kinda what I thought.
Contaminated pizza cartons or cupcake cartons, whatever, yeah, so.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and so the, my comment then is, personally, I would have liked to have seen much more aggressive efforts at residential public education as soon as this became, you know, kind of a done deal, which is really the end of last year, uh, when China made it clear that this is what they were gonna do. And so, I, you know, I think we've lost a little time, and I would hope that we have pretty aggressive public education, especially for residential waste streams. 'Cause I think, you know, in Ojai, if they have the knowledge, you'd be surprised how well they may pretty well cooperate, you know? Uh, and then my, the final comment, and I'll yield the floor on that, is it'd be great to get a report back as to those efforts on public education, and whether or not there's any metrics that show that they've had some effect. Anyway, that's it.
Okay, I've gotta do that.
Paul?
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a, more of a philosophical question on this. Why are the people that are providing the resources paying for that? If China says you have to send us cleaner stuff, why isn't China paying for that? Why, why are we the ones that are subsidizing? First of all, we are providing the product and paying to provide the product, and China's buying it, and we're subsidizing their purchase. Why isn't China paying for the purchase?
I think the answer to that is essentially, uh, they do pay for it, and that offsets the cost of recycling. It's just they're paying less for it now. Uh, I think it was recognized in China, as I understand from the articles, that they, their own country, their own market does not recycle much, and they're really trying to step up and recycle more materials within their own country. Uh, and also, with a drop of oil, the cost of raw, uh, plastic resins has dropped, so it's very competitive with the raw virgin resins are, are competitive with recycled resins. So, there's just the drop of oil prices, the demand, they're trying to push their own country to do this. As I understand it, the WTO actually requires that you're, as a member, that your country has, uh, recycling efforts and so on, that they weren't meeting. So, uh, it's a whole variation, but I think part of it is, is China moves up, uh, the socioeconomic ladder a bit, they're pushing for recycling within and, uh-
But don't they need the product? Don't they want their, I mean, are they, do they wanna recycle and we don't? Is that the issue? We have an overabundance of recycling materials here that we have to sell on the open market? And what happens to materials if we don't sell it to China? I just don't understand why we have to subsidize something that China is buying.
I, I think it absolutely, they were buying so much that there probably was an overdependence on China, and, and we're paying the price by that overdependence. They were paying the top price, and, uh, they aren't anymore. I think it was, they said, uh, last, like, a year and a half ago, as part of the Sword Policy, they audited a couple thousand businesses and found this huge black market of people taking in the waste and, and selling contaminated resins and plastics that didn't meet standards that should have been met, and it was a huge, uh, black market for, believe it or not, for recyclables that are on, goes on over there, and that's part of the Sword, is to clamp down on that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, um, I think this is our, our opportunity, because we're always talking about becoming a model sustainable city, and how we deal with our waste is a key part of this. This is our chance to really show what it should look like. We should ban single-use plastic bottles. We should ban straws, you know, and these are things that other cities, New York, is discussing, and it's, it's time for us, you know, to put this on the agenda and discuss it. There are ways to do it. There are people in Ojai, a number of school, schools and teachers, there was a group at the, at Ojai Earth Day at Libby Park that is, is, has a petition, and they have a plan for how we can ban, you know, we have to start somewhere. And we can start by never u-, you know, we shouldn't never have at the dais plastic bottles of water. Now, those are for emergencies. But, um, you know, I have some questions that I want to ask Harrison, 'cause ultimately, this is an unsustainable lifestyle, all this plastic, what's hap- if you read what's happening to the ocean, I mean, what we're, what we're discussing is the least of our problems. We're discussing the finances. We're not discussing what's happening to marine life, what's happening to the earth, you know, with all this plastic pollution. So, I would like to ask Harrison, are they, are, can they come to the front so I can ask some questions?
Well, we're, we're discussing rates right now, as opposed to, you know, long-term ecological balance, I think.
Okay, we're, I, I'm fine with the rates. As far as I'm concerned, they should be higher. I, I have no problem with that. No problem at all with the rates. But while they're here, I wanted to, you know, there's questions I've always wanted to ask them. Um, you know, I, I mean, this is all part of the discussion. We don't, I mean, we can have higher rates, but why don't we have all our fest- festivals? You're on the board of the wine festival. Why don't all our local organizations have, you know, low-trash festivals so that we reduce our trash? We could easily do it. I've started carrying a spo-, you know, we're now used to bringing a bot-, you know, filling up our bottles. We can start taking our silverware in our purse. Nothing wrong with that. You know, there are multiple videos that show, uh, you know, that we can't keep making plastic forks and spoons. This is all readily accessible information, and that we should be, you know, this is just a sign of what's to come. We shouldn't, it's appalling that we're sending our trash to China. When you see these poor people working, you know, for quarter, an hour or whatever, you know, sorting through the trash, that's, you know, that's, it's, it's just, it's appalling. And so, you know, that has, I think it's coming to an end. This is just the beginning of it. It's great that China wants to recycle their own trash. That's what they should be doing. So, uh, okay, um, can I just ask, where, where are they?
This is not on the agenda, this is not a topic.
Okay, I'll just call them up and ask my questions then, okay.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I think the council members want to raise some of those points at future agenda items, for the council to consider in an appropriate time and when it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, right, thank you.
I have one question. The, um, you brought up an interesting point, 'cause I wasn't aware of it, and that's the different labeling that's on different, um, product. Is there any way, I mean, we have a, uh, a, a blue can, and we have a green can and a brown can. Um, did I hear that we have another level that we could actually, um, if we wanted to, um, uh, differentiate the product? So, were you were saying with a triangle, with, with, uh, something in it? I've never s- I'll be honest with you, I've never heard of that, and, so is, are there different levels of plastic? Can, should we be putting one product in one container, and another product in another container, and cardboard in another container, and, um, and if that's so, um, I think it's important that we, um, create a process to educate the community on that, 'cause I can't be the only one that's heard that for the first time. Um, so I'm, I think that there's just a lack of education in general. So, um, if we can enhance that somehow.
Yeah.
Can you incorporate that with what Suz's concerned about, maybe put it on the future agenda?
Just to highlight, that's on the trash flash. I mean, that's, but I think we need to make it easier, 'cause I've looked at that, and it's still similar to the old pattern. It's a little bit confusing, 'cause there was so much flexibility before on what went into your recycle. So, really, the thing now is, is it, should it go in recycle or trash? 'Cause if you can help by putting clean recyclable materials in the recycling can-
Right.
-that helps them reduce processing and helps it more efficiently get to the markets where they can-
I've been to their site. I've, um, and seen the, the, uh, the shuffling of the waste. It's incredible what they do. The service that they provide us is just incredible in general. So, again, these rates are, are totally adequate and fair.
And you can see they're very competitive, yeah.
Yeah. I, I do want to say one thing, because I was not aware of this for a while, that if you put your recyclables in a, um, in a compostable bag or what, or any kind of bag, they don't, I was told, um, that they don't, it, it gets, goes to the landfill automatically, 'cause they don't open it, or, is that true?
They used to want to see bags separated materials, but the new process is to not bag materials, and that's clarified in the trash flash, yeah.
Yeah.
So, they want them all just open, so it's easier to move through, yeah.
Everything open, just throw it, yeah.
Is the, and one last question, is the, is the trash flash on our website?
No, it's on Harrison's, and we can definitely, uh, put a reference to it.
We have a page on our website under Public Works that talks about solid waste, and it has language in there about what can be recycled and whatnot. So, Greg-
Right.
-we might want to double-check that to make sure that that's up to-
I'll make sure we refer to the most current, all the time.
Up to speed.
Yep.
But I, I think with Harrison's permission, we could probably link to their trash flash too, which I doubt they would have an issue with that.
Just more education.
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh-
All right.
Good conversation, uh, and we'll have that as a separate topic on that part. Do we have a motion on the-
Move to approve.
Second, second.
Moved and seconded. Is any further discussion? Good. None. Uh, call the roll, please.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hany?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, thank you, Greg.
It's a public comment. We have not had a public comment.
Chris, okay, I'm sorry, we should, I didn't have a card, but that's fine, come on.
Apologize. I don't want to, I don't want to screw it up for the Harrison guys. They do an, an amazing job in the valley, but-
Thank you.
-when I was a kid growing up, we had a transfer station. It would have a 40-yard dumpster out here at the city yard, and when it was Ojai rubbish. You remember? And then, when that closed down, we used to take garbage, and you could take it in a pickup truck, construction material, out to where the wood recycler is. And that went for many years. And I guess what I'm saying is, maybe as, as part of an environmental approach, and not to do away with everyone's cans, but you could charge more money, but if you had construction material you wanted to dump, or just cleaning up your yard, instead of hauling it all the way down to, almost to Oxnard, if Harrison had a, a 40-yard bin at the city yard or somewhere, where people could pay more money and just dump it there instead of dumping it off Dentison Grade or on the side of the road, um, that would be environmental, and that would be a way to educate people about recycling and all that, and, and I think that would be a good service that the city could provide, possibly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, to add to their income stream.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, uh, we are-
It's traffic, too.
We are now on item number five, and, um, I guess, Mr. City Manager?
So, uh, this is the item, which is the request from two council members for a discussion of actions supporting water resiliency. There, there was no staff report, produced his result of this item, as it was requested by two members of council. So, I will turn it over to the members who requested it for the presentation. Okay?
Great.
You want to go first? You go.
No, well, you, um, first of all, first of all, um, what, you know, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to the whole process when we're done after a public comment, if we have, do we have any, uh-
We have no cards.
Great, wow. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna let Bill start out with his actions supporting water resiliency. He says something he's gonna read, then I'm gonna follow up with, uh, Regina's statement on the transmittal, and, and a comment to the, uh, city council. And then, if we want to get into a discussion about it, we can. And then, after that, um, I think Bill and I both will have some comments to help, um, spearhead or drive this home. So, Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, and I'll, um, start out by saying that, um, we just had a goal session where we talked a lot about, um, water, its importance, resiliency, um- a lot about water, its importance, resiliency, sustainability, and we view this as getting very, getting more focused on that particular effort. I recently came across a study done, I believe in 2013, by the Brand School of Environmental Science at the UCSB and it was very interesting, it was a water budget for the entire watershed. That's interesting in itself. And then they specified two particular actions that the city ought to be looking at, city of Ojai. And one was the focusing on stormwater cap, more effective stormwater capture and recharge because we have the largest piece of hardscape over the Ojai basin and therefore the highest potential for that. I also came across a study back years and years ago, not that many years ago, about 10 years ago from, that Magni did, again, Mr. Magni did, again, for the city of Ojai. You know, it's amazing how much institutional memory we tend to forget about in Ojai. And this study, the statistic that struck me was that in a area of 4.3 square miles, we have 16 miles of stream channel that go across our city limits. We're probably, if you look at the maps, the most concentrated stream flow in terms of the old natural courses, of probably anywhere in the Ojai Valley, might be why the city was built here, I don't know. The point I'm trying to make here though is that in terms of, I think the spirit of everything, everybody doing what they can, the city could, I think, probably follow up on the, what has been suggested, what has been analyzed and what has been proposed in terms of a couple things that the city ought to focus on, one of which in particular is the stormwater capture and recharge. Furthermore, the state is moving towards significant grant matches and support for these types of efforts, very strong move in that direction, as well as possibly by metering the amount of recharge, say in drywells, to be actually to get some kind of credit or in effect monetizing because you're adding to water supply in the same way that you would be, you know, doing other kinds of, you know, buying imported water, for example. So the possibility, for example, of the, if the city can demonstrate more recharge into the basin, then water that we're using on Sarzati might be able to be financially to some degree offset by that demonstrated recharge. The person that we have come across that is most on the cutting edge for this kind of work has submitted a proposal, the Sierra Watershed Progressive, they're very tied in at the state regulatory level to all the trends and developments in this area. And so we're submitted this, we did three things, actually, what there's, the first thing is submitting this particular proposal for deliberation by council for possible direction for staff to include the seed funding for something that we hope and think that have some confidence in could result in a lot of leveraging for grants for even more financial support along these lines in the next fiscal year budget cycle, including then another option of including, of asking for some seed money right now, yeah, that could provide, get a start on a couple of these tasks that are listed and again, take a positive, a positive step. Additional benefits include development of design guidelines for public works to follow. We're incorporating stormwater capture in the street project and public rights away, part of our complete streets program that we've already identified as a goal, in other words, get some help for being more efficient in terms of those design guidelines. And I already spoke to the potential we have for, I did a quick and dirty and I asked, calculation and I asked a couple people whether it made sense and if we up, say, our stormwater capture and recharge by, say, 30 to 50% in a normal rain year, if we ever see one of those again, that could potentially represent a recharge in the aquifer equal to pretty much what the whole city of Ojai uses in a year. In other words, we have the potential of, in terms of overall water budget and taking responsibility for what we are able to do, possibly enhance the recharge of the aquifer on some similar order of magnitude, given sufficient rain, to be somewhat comparable in magnitude to the entire water that the city of Ojai uses in a year. That was a sobering calculation. So the task outlined in this proposal, you know, again, provide work for sustainability in general as we contemplate water-wise development standards, so another thing we could get support and help for. And that's one part of this work, it's also a foundation for updating or starting to update our master environmental assessment or that hasn't been updated since 1987 or 88, I forget which, which is the underpinning between various elements of our general plan that we know we need to be updated. And in other words, seed money for something we can do and the overall effort that holds the potential for leveraging as well as helping, giving us tools for governance for goals already identified. So that's one part and there's a second part and I'll get to a third part later, but the second part is, I think we ought to, I also included the cooperative regional approach to improving Ventura County's water supply reliability, also known as the Three Sisters Plan in this agenda item, for us to see if we wanted a sense of the council for endorsing in principle that effort. So that's a separate item, but I think that's my introduction to what this is intending to achieve.
So what I'm going to follow up on is the fact that we have been discussing water for over two years now and we all have come to the conclusion that some actions need to be taking place, pardon me, rather than sitting on our hands. There's a number of groups out there that are willing to do something and in fact, we've come a long way on that, converting people to thinking about the fact that we need to start looking at water a little differently than we have in the past. So fortunately for us, we've, we've found someone who's fallen into our lap, who is incredibly educated in this area, is a practicing person in this field, she's doing an incredible job and worked up at Thatcher School, so that's a, that's a win for us. She's, as Bill said, she's associated with all of the major grant funders in the state of California, she knows where the money is, she knows how to get it, that's a win for us. And I think the most important thing to understand is, any water that we can catch and release to our basin is going to take the strain and the stress off of the lake water. So no matter what we do in the Three Sisters Plan or anything down the road in that area because that is down the road, that's probably five to six to seven years off, we can be doing right now and we could be impacting our basin water and we could actually be utilizing that more often, if not more frequent, if not all the way, to sustain the water for this community. So there's just a multitude of reasons why we need to do it and probably the biggest one is, someone needs to take a leap forward and take some action. And all of the bodies are still, are still in the talking phase and we have an opportunity to be in the walking phase and we need to walk together and we need to start solving this problem.
I just want to express my wholehearted support for the comments that my two colleagues made. I also met with Regina Hirsch, the expert that they're referring to, and she is out of town or she would have come to the podium and done another presentation. I was very, I'm impressed with her at all levels, but especially her, she seems to have the pulse on the state and to get funding. And plus she has a stake in Ojai, she would like to, you know, she has a son that she wants to send to the school, so she's going to be, be here even more. I wholeheartedly support your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. One is that has there ever been any problems with, and this may be something for you Matt, with the issue of riparian rights? If we begin to capture a lot of the rainwater so that it's not getting into the streams and is not getting into the Ventura River, first of all, it's going to keep more water here, not in the river, which is going to cause it not to be able to be diverted to the lake. So we'll be capturing water that would normally go to the lake or we would be retaining enough water that it would not go to the, no water would be diverted to the lake. Go ahead.
I'd like to respond and you can respond too. Number one, the water that falls on Ojai doesn't get to the lake because it discharges San Antonio Creek below the diversion, below any inflow into the lake. So we have, you know, all we are is, is, you know, the groundwater aquifer, which is supposed to be our primary reservoir, but the backup be casitas, so it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the lake, that's number one, okay? Number two, one of the interesting things is that the riparian habitat on San Antonio Creek is enhanced by higher average level of aquifer because that promotes a higher proportion of the year.
For stream flow.
Uh, for stream flow. So it's actually, it supports riparian habitat if you have a higher level, higher average level of aquifer, number, that's number two. Number three, it supports agriculture because the hot, if we, to the extent that we can have the aquifer at high enough levels for agriculture pumps to work, then they don't have to buy expensive potable water, they can use well-potable. So it helps our agriculture, which I think we all like. And then the fourth thing is, there's been some case law and I'm going to go back to the, the attorney here where, and also regulatory goals. The state has defined regulatory goals, one of them being stormwater capture for water quality purposes, as well as aquifer replenishment, number one. And number two, I believe there's been some new laws or regulations, I'm not sure which, basically say that, that water that falls on the jurisdiction is basically the jurisdictions before it leaves the jurisdiction. It's kind of cloudy and gray, but there's been some movement in that direction.
The latter piece is mixed, but to answer the former, original question, there's, if a landowner or another person has a riparian right or even a diversionary right off of a river, that right is to the water that exists in the river, that doesn't, there's no guarantee that there would be water in the river and thus if the city or any other person reduces the amount of water that flows into the river via stormwater capture off of the would otherwise sheet flow, that doesn't impact the water rights. So we're okay from that perspective.
As long as you don't dam up the river, you're all right.
Exactly, damming up the river is a very different conversation.
Okay.
But if you just reduce the amount of water that flows into the river or flows into the street, streams and creeks that flow into the river through reducing the amount that runs off, that doesn't impact the water rights. That's legal, in other words.
And there's an advantage to riparian habitat, they have a longer part of the year with slow flow rather than just a couple great big flows that get to the ocean. I mean, riparian habitat is enhanced.
Well, that's, that's something that's good, that wasn't specifically what I was addressing because there's people that have water rights south of us that if you, if you were, if we are not giving them as much water as they think they're entitled to because we're, we're reservoiring it here, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be any legal issues that we were getting ourselves.
And the key on that is that we aren't, we can't, aren't putting new dams in the river, we aren't tapping new diversions off of it, new pipes off of it and that the water that we would be retaining is water that would otherwise be sheet flowing naturally, it's distinct from putting a straw into the river.
I think you could equate it to the fact if the city decided to go to permeable pavers on every one of our streets, which allows for recharge and for percolation of water, there's no one downstream that could come back to say us that you cannot do permeable pavers, that you have to do asphalt. So that's, that's one of the, a way to look at it.
Correct.
The other, the other thing is, is I have, I thought of the same problems, Paul, with that with downstream users and, you know, are we going to be open to any type of lawsuit? But again, I agree with Bill in it and Regina has pretty much stated so also, that what is ours is ours until it leaves us and then it belongs to whoever the next person is downstream. The other question that I have is, how do we, how do we coordinate efforts with the county flood control who technically maintains all of the land above us and how we can do some type of conjunctive use and conjunctive capture with them? And again, the grant team actually would study that and allow us to work together with county flood control to create more opportunity or a better opportunity to collect, trap and store, so.
And I just want to reiterate one additional comment, one of the identified advantages of stormwater capture and sinking is water quality improvement. In other words, the less time the water's flowing on pavement and the faster it gets into ground and then comes out, you know, into San Antonio Creek, that's cleaner water than going over a lot of asphalt into San Antonio Creek.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor?
No. I do agree that we have to rethink how we think of water and how we use the water and how we price the water and this is not an immediate solution, but it's certainly one of the solutions. And so what I would like to see as we go through the budget process, you know, the, sort of the cost benefit, the risk reward, what we'd be doing. I know that the county has put in a settling, spreading ground and they did it a long time ago and it got wiped out by a flood and then they did it again and spent millions and it still isn't really operational and it was placed in probably the most productive area of the valley that it could have been placed. So I have a little bit of skepticism as to whether or not we, in our four square miles, not that we shouldn't be trying to do everything we can, but it's, I'd like to see the, a little bigger picture as to, you know, how much money we're talking about spending when it's referred to as seed money versus how much there'll be in matching money versus how much money is out there for what purposes and maybe that's what the first part of this thing does, I don't know.
That's, yes, sir.
But, but we really need a whole lot more information before we spend much general fund money within the city because of the, you know, there, there are lots of ideas and lots of things to be done and the cost benefit of a lot of those ideas, some are very expensive with very little return, some of them are less expensive and maybe with greater returns. So I would hope that as we get more information that we would kind of know what, how much money we're putting in for this exploration that we're doing because even if it were to be successful, then it depends on the rains and then it depends on the percolation and as we found out on that one property, which we required permeable parking lot, then they came back and provided the soils analysis and the rest of it and said, you can't get the, you have an eight-foot clay cap and the water won't run through it. So we then changed that. So anyway, there, I mean, there are a lot of unknowns, but the idea is good, I think it's, and I have met with Regina a couple of times and she does, she is impressive what she's, you know, trying to help out up at Thatcher, but, you know, I think this, this could be very expensive, so, Bill?
I wanted to respond to your comments because you're absolutely right and I think that's one of the things that I was impressed about in terms of the deliverables if we did put this in the budget cycle fully and that is exactly what you're just talking about, having some detailed imagery and some detailed kind of analysis of our soil structure so we know where the opportunities are and when they're not. And it's not just the private property, it's also a public right of way and knowing, for example, if you've got a long run of a, of a street coming downhill with a, like Blant Street, which has a lot of water on it when it rains, you know, where the opportunities are for, say, a drywell recharge and when they're not. You know, the geology may, may vary considerably along that run. So I think that's part of exactly why I was, you know, like one of the deliverables on, on page five dash two or page eight scope of work is a map of the recharge opportunities areas, a map of the recharge opportunity areas and a summary of the quantified recharge potential by land use will be included in the catalog in the projects. I think that's exactly the kind of, kind of thing we need in our toolkit.
But as far as the, you know, taking a prudent or cautious approach to this, that meeting you and I attended last Friday with all of the agencies and I guess it was Regina that was knowledgeable about this Danish company that was putting in a proposal, it was like a half a million dollar project, how does that overlay this? Because I thought that was going to take the entire valley and identify these areas.
Well, I think she's talking about applying that data if it's collected in terms of putting together a map of recharge opportunity.
But until we have that, that data, it seems sequentially that having that data would be really great to know where, it's just like whether you're drilling for oil or, you know, in reverse in this case, we're trying to put it into the ground, but knowing where the high probability or production of percolation. But knowing where the high probability or production of percolation, where we're saving the water. Because one of the things people don't understand when they read in the paper, the millions of gallons of water that go into the ocean in two seconds or something, is though that that is clean water, and that would be otherwise trappable. And it's much more complicated than that, as they explained with the issues of the diversion canal into the lake. So, anyway, if, if the, the request is, is to put it into the budget process, which we are commencing within a week or two, I think that's a good idea. This is, certainly should be one of our top priorities, along with housing and a few others, as to how much money for the exploration and figuring out what we're doing. Steve?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions here, and I don't mean this to sound cynical, or, but I'm, I'm doing my, doing my job as the city manager here, so sometimes I have to ask the hard questions. I, I was going through the, the outline of tasks and the, the costs, and for the phases and the match. And I was wondering if, if one of the council members could explain to me, what, what portion is that would be coming from the city? In other words, out of that total there for the three phases, it looks like it's a total cost of...
At the bottom of the page.
Ninety-six thousand.
Yeah, that would be the full, the full, the full funding, if we felt like we could justify by the benefit cost analysis.
Okay.
Would be ninety-six thousand and ninety-eight dollars.
Do you know what the match is coming from, then?
I believe there's some discussion of that. It's various programs, I believe primarily through Department of Water Resources.
Right, but also their match is stated on each of these sheets?
Their proposed match.
Right.
So, what is the total? Is that the total for both the match and, and the state grant? Or is that just our share in order to try to go after the match?
Yeah, they're talking about the, if we wanted to put, if we wanted to fund all these tasks in the next budget year, over the next budget year, the total would be ninety-six thousand and ninety-eight dollars. That's net of what they think they can get, about half of that in match. In other words, the total, the total effort would be more than that. It would be ninety-six oh nine eight, plus they believe they can get match of thirty-nine four six two.
Right. Right, but that's, the ninety-six is the net. The total would be hundred and thirty...
Nine.
Hundred and thirty-nine thousand, of which thirty-nine or forty would be a match.
Right.
That's...
About a hundred thousand dollars.
Forty percent, a little less than that, thirty percent match. And we'd be observing about seventy percent.
And that's if we wanted to go the whole, and again, you know, my, my argument here is that this could be very cost effective. For example, rather than hiring, hiring consultants, and when we're doing complete street projects for each project, or not, or having to figure it out as we go, those are expensive too. We know how expensive some of those consultants and complete street projects have been. Frankly, a lot more than that, you know? And it seems to me that we might well, this might well just pay off just in that, in that respect. And again, we're not, we're just asking that it be included and due deliberation in the next budget cycle. But we are also wishing, I'll be offering a motion for some, some seed money to start, start this process. But we'll get to that after we finish Q and A.
Okay. So, we got up here for any...
Well, actually, there's three phases here, if you see it. There's a one, a two, and a three. So, the first phase is that, what we're gonna talk about trying to stimulate tonight is phase one. And what we're gonna be asking for is fifteen thousand dollars.
How much?
Fifteen thousand. And Regina is gonna, is gonna, has additional funding that she's willing to put towards it already also.
Yeah.
So, it's not just our money. She's actually gonna become a stakeholder to be a beneficiary of whatever we do in this community. So, I think that's a win for us. But I think that's probably where we should start at, Bill, is probably talk about that, unless Steve has more questions.
Well, I have a couple of real quick, quick point and a question. So, I just, I think it's, I think the council members all understand this, but obviously, you know, going through that, I'm not saying that this is not a worthwhile process, but just so everybody understands, this is not going to get us any projects. This would be doing the study, coming up with some potential projects, and then we would have to take a look at those and see if that was something that we wanted to implement, right?
What this also does, though, is it does allow us to, on the short term, to actually start writing the request for funding.
For funding.
And that's part of it.
Got it.
So, in the second phase, which would be if we wanted to go into the second phase, would be that additional funding for matching funds at that level.
Got it. So, here's my, here's my stupid question of the evening. So, I'm trying to understand, obviously, we're all in this world together. We all understand that drought is a big issue and all that, and we all need to do our, our part. We all need to work together. I'm trying to understand, I guess from a very selfish perspective, how this will directly benefit the city of Ojai. Again, I understand there could be some real great indirect impacts, but, you know, we don't control the basin, we don't set the rates, we don't, you know, so...
I like to answer that.
So, I, I'm, thank you.
All right. Number one, the basin is not just a big bowl. It is a series of smaller lenses.
Sure, understood.
There is a distinct benefit for us to sink water throughout the community into those lenses to help support our heritage trees, for example. That, that, you know, the water migrates from these lenses, higher down slowly. To the extent that we can recharge those lenses, that helps maintain our streetscape. It helps maintain the viability of our, of our street trees, for example, and our large heritage trees. That's number one.
Let me add to that, but it also depends on where you, in fact, insert the water, and the water at the foot of the hills works pretty well. Time to gets, rolls down to the bottom of the hill, you don't get much benefit.
And I think that's precisely the, one of the deliver, the importance of the deliverables in terms of recharge opportunity areas. It gives us a sense of where we get to pay off for that kind of thing. Number one. Number two, let's get on, I would say argue that let's get on the front end of being able to take advantage of what looks like the regulatory movements, to be able to get credit for recharge. In other words, go to OB GMA and say, we can demonstrate we're increasing recharge by this amount, so we want to break on what you're, on what we're, what we're having to pay
I see.
for watering Sarzody playing fields.
I see. Okay.
There's also, there's, there's other conditions too, but the other one is creating an environment where you're doing something, and how that doing will influence the area plan. So, and that's something that no one talks about. You know, our problem is, is small and immediate because of the size of us. The scope of the water problem in the county is a hell of a lot bigger. And again, we're gonna be setting an example, we're gonna be doing something, we're gonna be able to take any of the, any of the information that we have gathered, we'll be able to utilize that through, not just in the city, but also in the surrounding area, as well as offering it to the Ventura River Board that's just organizing. You know, there's a multitude of uses for this information. So, yes, would it be great if all these other players would chip in? Guess what? The reality is, those players are not involved right now. We are. We're the ones who are struggling with water, and we need to do something to identify how we can help ourselves. This is one of the paths. Because those other paths that we're all in agreement that are gonna happen are five, six years down the road.
This is, this is not a whole lot sooner, guys, though, to be honest with the public. It's not a whole lot sooner. And the water that comes out of the basin is free. You, you know, that, that's one of the things that's also misunderstood. It is the overhead and the extraction and the transportation costs of the water
Yeah.
that is involved.
Well, it's twenty-five dollars an acre foot.
Right.
Right.
To be produced. But I don't see the OB GMA particularly giving the city of Ojai a break on their water, 'cause they put water into the basin, when we're, we can take the water out ourselves, and we want to go into the water business with a well. But if it goes through all their processes, there's, they've still got the same cost, so.
I'm just saying the regulatory drift is towards requiring some sort of monetizing incentive for recharge.
Right. But it does seem like a lot of this, I mean, there's no, nothing wrong with trying to get out ahead of things, but it, there seems like there are a lot of other questions to be sure that this actually is going to work, and that we will be a good model. Because there's, there is more reason for a groundwater basin group to be doing this, whether it's the Upper Ventura River or the OB GMA, than for us to be doing it, you know, it'd be, in some ways, maybe getting them to partner with us, and us give out all of what we've got to them, and have them contract for this, you know, this study, because it benefits the basin.
Well, well, I, I wouldn't, I, I don't necessarily disagree with that a hundred percent, but what I would say is, OB GMA is broke. OB GMA has no money. OB GMA is not gonna be self-sustaining very long.
But if we're gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars through them, it seems like would be...
Well, I, I wanna...
I'd rather have control of that, of that funding. I'd rather have control of the results of that funding and those studies. I'd rather us have a seat at that table and sharing that information versus giving it to someone.
I'd rather provide a leadership and providing a template for others to use, number one. And number two, we've got the highest proportion of hardscape over the aquifer of any other jurisdiction, by far. There's a responsibility there. We can have, we're sheeting more water than, than the unincorporated area over the basin.
But these studies will not put any water in the ground. It's the beginning of what you do to find out how you might put the water in the ground. And then you have to build the structures in order to put it in the ground. So, the cost of this is far greater than just the grants. So, if, if everybody, you know, like the Watershed Protection Agency and others, join us to gather all this data, and what Regina was working on with that Danish firm, Valleywide, seems like that's the beginning spot, rather than us stepping out when we really are not water experts by any means.
And we're hiring somebody.
Spending money, maybe giving it to one of those other agencies who are water experts.
So, ultimately, I believe, again, Johnny, I can't argue your, your case with you. Your, I, what you're saying has validity. But here's the other part of it. The other part of it is this community's looking for us for leadership. And the community is looking into a stage four, although I heard, and a stage five, but I heard recently that there's no way we'll reach a stage five. Well, I'm, I'm not gonna hold my breath on that one. But the community is looking for leadership, and we need to start leading. We can't be followers, and we can't, we, we just can't be passive about this anymore. We need to take some action, and I think the seed money that we're asking tonight, fifteen thousand dollars, you know, I'm not gonna say it's chump change, but I'm gonna say it's a small part of the pot. And if, and, and I believe that this, that this is going to be fulfilled through Regina's actions. And yes, it may cost us more money down the road, and that's where we can get into the sharing process of that cost. But for the short term, we need to invest, and we need to start now, not later.
And I want to make another point on that, and in terms of leadership that we should exercise. You know, we stepped up and committed the engagement for defending the Ojai area plan before anyone else did. In term, and that, and what did that lead to? That led to a multiplied support in the same effort from the Defense Fund. We stepped up, and I think it had an influence in, in, in getting that additional support from that other agency. So, I agree in terms that we should be working all together, but I, I also think that we can take leadership steps that provoke additional steps from these other agencies, rather than just waiting for trying to work things out in terms of having them do what, you know, I think they will step up if we step up.
My reaction to that is, is that we haven't been beating our chest over it, but we have been providing leadership in a quiet and constructive way. Bill and you both have attended meetings. I go to maybe two, sometimes three meetings a week on water. I serve on the agent, area agencies of water, and they had never seen anybody from our town, you know, other than to go on the tour once or twice. We meet regularly. We've got Steve Bennett now engaged. We've got people at the table in a, in a, sort of an egalitarian sort of way, which I think is the first step, because the biggest suspicion of all these different agencies is somebody's gonna tell them what to do, rather than to do this collaboratively. The county seems to scare everybody that they're trying to take over. And the next suspect for taking over is always the city of Ojai is trying to tell us what to do. So, I think we've been pretty effective at getting to where we are, and it seems to me that we're in the budget process. We're, what, we're headed in, we're gonna be in May before we know it. The budget hearings will be going. There, and this stuff is not gonna go through the bureaucracy any faster, I don't think, than our budget's gonna go through. We have a little time to do this, and then we can decide which is the most effective. If nobody wants to join us in June, and we've got enough data to say that this is still an example that needs to be set, then we put it into our priorities, and we put the money in the budget.
No, let me, let me, yeah, sorry.
But to jump into things, as we frequently do, this was, the reason why this is the last item on the agenda is because there was no real time to do the detail analysis. Staff didn't do any work on the thing, and they didn't really have the time to do it. And I just, everything is not, we're talking about a solution that's, still, this is probably is five years away too. It's, it doesn't mean we shouldn't take the first step, but what's the difference in six, eight weeks? And put it into our normal process where there is public discussion and more information. I, I don't, I guess I just don't see the urgency for this particular thing for seed money tonight. I...
Well, phase one is time sensitive. There are some grants out there that have to be applied for sooner than the end of the budgetary ends. So, that's why we're looking at seed money tonight, and then looking at the other hundred thousand dollars to be discussed in the budgetary process as other information is provided.
Is there something in here that I didn't see that talked about, that some deadline that
Well...
says that a lot of these things have funding cycles, sometimes two or three times a year, off of bond issues? So, everything seems to be, we gotta do it now, or we're gonna miss it out. It's sort of like the sale's over on midnight on Saturday night or something. And I, I guess I, you know, really...
Mayor and council, sorry to interrupt you there, but I think I can add a point on this one. Under the Brown Act, the way the agenda item is worded, the city can't approve spending any money on this item tonight. The item is worded as, that the council receives information regarding actions supporting water residency, and directs staff to further investigate any desired actions. Money could be spent with an approval by the council at the next meeting, but unfortunately, it couldn't be approved tonight.
Then I'll make a motion, and see if we can get a majority on it.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. No reason to debate that all night, if that was, was an issue.
That we direct staff to evaluate this proposal for funding in two steps. First, seed money of fifteen thousand in the current fiscal year. And second, evaluation for net benefits of inclusion in the next fiscal year funding cycle. With the report back on the seed money due on the next council meeting, agenda.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of questions. One is, if this passes, we need to know where the fifteen thousand is gonna come from.
That'd be the next meeting, yeah?
The other thing is, is that I want to know what we're gonna push out of line to get this back at our next meeting, and whether this item is so urgent that we have to push something out of line that's already probably on the agenda for our upcoming meeting. And I'd like to have a discussion about that before the, the call to question.
Well, that's a good point. I, my concern would be for the staff. This is a really complex thing. And even if we were to take a leap of faith, it's still, there's a little bit of time to gather the information, and the agenda goes out in less than a week. So, I think if you want to do it, the first, let's see, the first meeting in May is the next, is that the next meeting? Yeah. So, the second meeting in May, and we might even, you know, be moving enough in the workshop for budget to... I mean, that would be part of that discussion that Paul's asking for, as to where's money gonna come from, and what isn't gonna get done. But I think it's really crowding it to just suddenly throw it back on staff and expect that they're gonna have the kind of answers, so.
That you'd want.
Yeah, 'cause we're supposed to have this stuff a week before the meeting, so it's...
Well, it was, it's in the, I put it in the packet. I mean, this information was all in the...
I, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm not opposed to this. In fact, if, if we had, if we had been able to vote on it tonight, and there had been a legitimate source of the money, I might even have been in favor of it. But if we have to now put this ahead of something else, and then we have to find out where the money's gonna come from, but all of a sudden, we have another urgency item, I would need to know that there truly is a sense of urgency for this, and it needs to be tonight, that there has to be a sense of urgency. Because in order to get this back to us, even if it's not the next meeting, it's a meeting after that, we have to dedicate significant amount of staff time to evaluate this, I think.
Yeah, that, I, I agree with you. I think that's the problem. Not that that's not a good idea. We just don't have, you know, we do not have all the information, and one of the things we talked about at the priority meeting was the idea of a prudent and fiscally responsible budget process. And one of the things I think is wrong with our budget process, and I'm as guilty as the next person, when something comes up during the year to turn to the city manager and say, can you fund it? up during the year to turn to the city manager and say, "Can you fund it out of this year's budget?" Uh, but we should have a budget where we already know, you know, we should have a contingency that would, that we would be able to, you know, Bill could say, "Let's take fifteen thousand out of the contingency, but since we don't do it that way, and we've already had to shift a third of a million dollars or something to cover our good friend, the sheriff." Great results, though. I've worth every penny of it. Uh, but, but that whole thing is a very strange way in a budget our size to move that much money around and do it with no real, you know, it's, it really is sort of a religious experience up here and an act of faith, because we don't have the data.
There's two sources of money, and we all know that. One, Steve would have to look for it. The other one is, is obviously the reserve. So, we know the first, the first one is, yes, there's fifteen, there's three point some million dollars in the reserve, and we have access to fifteen thousand of it. That's the easiest one to go to. The second one might take a little time for Steve to figure out. He may or he may not. That's up to him. But we do have a funding source. So, I, 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 again, I, I understand the wheels of progress move slowly. I get it. And, and I, and I value and appreciate your comments and Paul's comment, comments regarding being fiscally responsible. I agree with that a hundred percent. But we're also at a point where we do have some action that has to be taken that is time-sensitive. So, if we're going to rely on Steve to read this report and make an evaluation, then Steve is going to have to get a hold of Regina ASAP, and he's going to have to get the facts from her, because she has them regarding which ones are time-sensitive and why we need to do this. And it is...
Get a report back.
We can get a report back to, to that, and again, supplement it with the report that's in front of you. And I don't have a sense that we can't get this done in fifteen, twenty minutes. We're talking short front-end funding and then having a long-term discussion over the balance of it. We're in agreement with that. I, I, no one is saying, "Let's write a check for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in two weeks." What we're saying is, "Let's fund the front end of this. Let's start this ball moving forward. Let's be, let's assert ourselves as leaders, and we'll, we'll take those, um, the, the good and the bad with it as it comes." But, but to shelve this for six weeks or eight weeks? I, I'm not gonna, the community isn't going to take that, and we're not going to take that. I can tell you that right now.
Randy, the community will take that.
No, they won't.
No, but please, they will take...
No, they won't.
Why don't we vote?
Well... Let me please finish, unless you're calling for the question.
No, I'm not. I'm just suggesting we vote.
The community is, is in the dark as we are. We do not have anything that says this is critically urgent. We've had it before. This isn't the first time in the last couple of months we've had these kind of deadlines. Uh, it may be true, and this may be a mistake, but it's not a mistake that's not curable, because this is not a tomorrow solution for anything. We're talking years. This is not going to put any water in anybody's garden as the result of this action tonight. And that, yes, we do have money. We have money in a reserve. That reserve is not following the city council's resolution, and it's underfunded. Now, that doesn't mean we don't have the right to change that and take the money out of it, but it is not a responsible approach. Most jurisdictions, in fact, the state law for counties does not allow you to go into your reserve without a, a supermajority to touch the money, uh, without a contingency. And unfortunately, we don't carry a contingency. It may be possible to fine fifteen thousand dollars, but waiting a few weeks and putting this through our normal process and getting the information for the public should be of greater concern than us suddenly on a particular evening to make a decision and say, you know, "You got to buy now or you're going to lose, miss out." I don't believe there's anything that will support that, but if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
We're talking step one. We're talking step one. There's a motion on the table, so...
Isn't the, part of the motion for the city manager to, to speak with Regina to find out what, my impression is that...
The question is, is which meeting does it come back? We're not arguing against this. We're just saying that the...
But, but, but to find, uh, my impression is that it is, from speaking with her, that it is time-sensitive.
That's why my motion's for the next meeting. We get a report back.
Yeah. And if he talks to her and that's, and it's not true, then we could reconsider the timing, but, um...
Okay, that's a reasonable...
I just have one other question. And I don't know whether this is an appropriate question, Mr. Summers, or not. Um, this is the end of our budget year. I mean, we're coming into the final, you know? We got the finish line in sight. Is there any money left in the general, in the, in the budget? Is there fifteen thousand dollars in the budget, or when we say this is coming back to us, we have to be saying it's going to come out of the reserve?
I guess the question would be if we could find something else in this year's budget that we know that we're not going to use, that we could reappropriate to another area.
I know a few things that are unexpended right now.
Well, I, I know...
You too. There's money that can be found for it. That's not really, to me, that's not the issue. The issue is the process.
Okay.
The process and timing. I thought what Susa said made some sense here, when you said, "If it turns out that when the staff checks into it, there is no urgency, then it won't come back."
Right.
It's unfortunate that she's not here. She wanted to be here, but she had another job somewhere else.
But that's, that's why, that's the spirit of my motion, is we get a report back at the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
That's not a reasonable...
So, let's vote.
Okay. Do we need to vote, or we just...
I made a motion.
You've got a motion in a second. Is there any objection to the motion?
No.
Okay. That, that seems like a reasonable solution to...
May, and I had another motion to make. I, I warned you at the beginning.
Yes, you did. You also warned me earlier about ranting. That was good. Yeah, okay. Proceed.
I would like to make a motion.
Yeah.
That the city of, of Ojai...
You moved to what?
Endorses the principles behind the cooperative regional approach to improving Ventura County's water supply reliability as published by the Ojai Valley Water Advisory Group on February two, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion. Move to second.
Before there's a vote, uh, to, not to be the bearer of bad news, but to go back to the Brown Act point...
Mr. Summers, this was included in the packet specifically...
But it was not the note.
But it wasn't listed on the agenda.
It was on the agenda as measures in support, discussion of actions supporting water resiliency.
And then recommendation is to direct staff to further investigate any desired actions. Looking just at the agenda, it's how to request them to council members...
I amend my motion that we put on the consent calendar at the next meeting, uh, an endorsement of the principles behind the, as specified already.
I'll revise my motion and second that.
Can you do that on this particular agenda item?
Yeah, this can bring things forward at the next meeting. That's fine.
So, you're saying to put it on the consent agenda just in case there are no questions, but if there are questions, explanation to the public always can be pulled.
Be pulled, yeah.
Would you like that in a resolution format?
Yes. I'll read my motion.
And I second it. Do we need a vote? We need a vote on that.
Consent is just fine.
It's just agenda, so we don't need to...
Yeah, if there's no objection, it's fine.
We don't have objection. We got two, two members of the council, at least two members of the council, so we're good.
And I won't test your patience any further, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm not.
I've got world-class patience.
No, no, no. It's nine o'clock. Come on. You're almost on schedule.
Okay.
You're almost on schedule. Don't tempt them.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay. So, where are we? Where, we go to, uh...
Anyway...
Okay, we done? Yeah, good. Hey, yeah. Hey, okay. I'll take you on that. Bill doesn't have anything. Randy, you don't have anything, do you? Right? I don't have any things. Uh, City Manager, can you pass on it tonight?
I could, but I, I know that the...
You won't? Okay.
Council did ask for some information to come back, so I think I should be...
Okay, go ahead.
So, I did reach out to the Concedus General Manager. Uh, council had asked me at the last meeting to find out what was happening with their water system assessment, and he did get back to me to let us know that their consultant is finishing up on the Ojai water system assessment with the validation of the system modeling. Uh, problem pipelines are being identified and prioritized for design and replacement and are going to be listed in their fiscal year 2018, nineteen capital budget. So, it sounds like they're, they're not quite done with the work, but they're, they're getting there, and they will be proposing, um, particular pipelines to replace in next year's budget.
And they did, didn't they say, or tell us, when, I think when Bill and I went over to one of their meetings, didn't they tell us that they had already done a certain amount of fire hydrant, uh...
They have. Yeah, they're well engaged in that.
Okay.
There's a bit of a, there's still a, a bit of a difference of opinion about whether they should be doing, actual, exercising the valve on the hydrants and, and get a, the kind of equipment that would allow that to be done with that water wastage or not, but that's a discussion further to have.
Thank you, Steve. You have some more or anything else?
Uh, just to note that on, on, on May eighth, um, we'd like to schedule a, a budget workshop, and we did have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. We're going to try to see if we could reschedule that to a different date. We want to stay on track with the budget. Um, and then for other items that are coming up on May eighth, um, we're planning to bring back the introduction of the ordinance to adjust the city council compensation. Uh, the city attorney has completed his work on the, uh, on the cannabis testing labs, which council had directed, so that, that would be coming back. Is that coming back as an ordinance introduction?
Yeah.
Right. I will be bringing to council a, a report, um, that I, that basically took a number of the issues that, um, the City Gate report raised in terms of the community development. I've worked with consulting firm Management Partners, and we have a, a final report, response to those, to the recommendations in the City Gate report. Um, so I would like to bring that forward at the next meeting for the council to receive and file. Um, and then I know that we had a request from, uh, Councilmember Wyerick about the historic survey for the Ojai Playhouse. So, well, we talked about that at the, at the, at the goal session earlier today, so. Um, and then a public consent, uh, calendar item for letter of opposition to AB nineteen twelve, also known as the Joint Powers Amendment Killer Bill. Uh, the league is requesting cities to take urgent action on that one, so we'll be, uh, asking council to support that. Um, a couple other minor things under the consent calendar, uh, that's, those are the, those are the main items for May eighth, and then the items that were just added tonight for the water resilience.
Okay.
Can I just wait? I just want to say that Ojai's first Earth Day in Libby Park was beyond...
It was lovely. It was lovely.
And the mayor gave his best speech ever. If you missed the event...
Asper, your spouse, thank her for me.
If you missed the event, there's hundreds of photographs on Facebook and on OjaiEarthDay.org, and it was videotaped. Probably we'll get it on local TV or something, but it was really wonderful. And I want to thank everyone who helped. It was really well worth the effort.
Thank you, Susa, for your work on that. That was a, a wonderful event and a lot of hard work with Ray Powers and Susa, plus their committees or their associates.
Do I have permission to approach for a second?
Well, we're adjourned. Now you go ahead and talk to us.
Water, um, it should be first.